Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute. Will the clerk call roll, please?
Counselor Bolan?
Here.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Furlough?
Here.
Counselor Grissel?
Here.
And Counselor Reese Kemp?
Here.
Thank you. And City Manager Gary Marks is at the City Managers Conference in, I believe it's in Bend. I think he's...
Yes.
Okay, first up, we have approval of council minutes, June 13th regular session and June 27th noon session minutes. Are there any corrections or additions?
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the council minutes from June 13th and June 27th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes are approved. Consent calendar, tonight is the agenda for July 11th, 2018. The Arts Commission Board Minutes, May 21st, 2018. And Planning Commission, May 16th, 2018.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent calendar is approved. Have a couple proclamations here. And the first one here is the Americans with Disabilities Act 2018. On July 26th, 2018, the City of Lebanon will celebrate the anniversary of the signing of the Americans with Disability Act, signed into law on July 26th, 1990 by President George H.W. Bush to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. The Act expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers and changing perceptions and increasing participation in community life. The full promise of the Act will be reached by remaining committed to continued efforts and to fully implement the Act. On the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, join the City of Lebanon in celebrating and recognizing the progress that has been made by reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion and recommending our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. Now therefore, I, Mayor Paul R. Aziz, do hereby affirm that we, the city, will continue to work toward full ADA compliance. And we actually are, one of the parks today is getting handicapped access. Cement is being poured out there and we're working on the Cheetah Lake, making that more accessible. And there's also, Ron and the crew will be working on sidewalks near downtown that we have somebody that's coming, I believe, from the state and they'll be doing some ramps where there are no ramps. So there's quite a bit that we're doing for that. And next up is National Night Out, August 7th, 2018. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention campaign entitled National Night Out on August 7th, 2018. And whereas, National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for Lebanon to join forces with other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police, community, and crime prevention efforts. And whereas, the community plays a vital role in assisting the Lebanon Police Department through local joint crime prevention efforts and by supporting Lebanon's National Night Out. And whereas, it is essential that all citizens of Lebanon be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing such crimes. And whereas, police, community partnerships, and neighborhood safety awareness and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Paul R. Aziz, hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 7th, 2018, National Night Out in Lebanon and call upon all citizens to join the Lebanon Police Department in supporting the annual National Night Out campaign. And Mayor, I have a copy of that for the Police Department for you guys. All right. Okay, at this time, the council welcomes all respectful comments regarding the city's business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in and stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. The council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. Is there anybody that would like to speak to council?
Hello, my name's Alicia Rogers. I'm the Main Street Manager for Lebanon Downtown Association. I just wanted to update everyone that we have had our July 1st Friday, which was again another success. A lot of businesses opened late, a lot of people downtown. Wasn't our busiest first Friday, but we're also thinking that a lot of people might have been camping since it was 4th of July week. Our next one is coming up on August 3rd. And it will have a carnival theme to it as well as showcasing the quirky turkeys that are going to be painted by the Lebanon Arts Commission event that they're putting on. We also had our first concerts in the park last night. So we had about 100 attendees watching Thunder Road. Next week is Barb...
Cecil.
Cecil, thank you. I knew I'm going to forget her last name. She's lead singer for Johnny Limbo and the Lugnets. So she'll be out next week on Tuesday night from 6:00 to 8:00. So that's a fun free event for members of the community down at Ralston Park. And then my last little piece of information is super exciting. The Trembles Building downtown did receive the Diamonds in the Rough grant. So we will be seeing some state funding going into revitalizing the front of that building and seeing the transom windows be brought back and restored.
Nice.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the public hearings. One moment here. There we go. Okay, my name is Paul Aziz. I'm the mayor of Lebanon and will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and the place set for the public hearing in the matter of planning file number 1804-11, an application for comprehensive plan amendment and zone changes to establish the mixed-use zone by the applicant David Hickey et al. This hearing is now open. Oregon land use laws require that several items be read into the record at the beginning of each and every public hearing. The city attorney will review this material. Your patience is appreciated as he goes through these statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council will follow ORS 197.763, which sets forth the quasi-judicial hearing procedures for the city council. These are also included on the walls in two different places if you want to review those. At the commencement of the hearings, counselors should announce any ex-party contacts or conflicts of interest. An ex-party contact is contact with anyone outside the meeting or with the property itself. A conflict of interest is when a counselor or a member of the counselor's family stands to profit from the outcome of the decision. Start out with the staff report, which will be presented by staff. We will then allow for questions of the staff by council. We will then open it up to public testimony. The audience may provide oral or written testimony concerning issues relevant to the hearing. All testimony or evidence must be directed towards the criteria described in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulation. Please note, failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval, if any, accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council and the parties, an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. We'll allow testimony of witnesses. Both proponents and opponents of the issue would be given an opportunity. The applicant has the burden of proof and will go first. Other proponents of the application will then be asked to present any evidence. We'll then allow opponents of the application to present any relevant evidence or relevant testimony to show that the applicant has not sustained their burden of proof. Then we'll provide rebuttal if necessary. We'll then close the public hearing and once closed, it will be deliberation by city council only. No new evidence will be allowed. Generally, a decision will be made this evening. The decision will be either to approve the application where council has found the criteria have been proven or deny the application when council finds that the applicant has not sustained their burden of proof. The council may approve an application with conditions for approval which are supported by the facts in the case and the land use plan or regulations.
Thank you, Trey. With that out of the way, I need to ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was sent in this case to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider the case. Okay, seeing none. Are there any declarations of ex-party contact, conflict, or bias by any members of the council?
No.
Okay, seeing none. Now we're ready for the staff report. Walt, when last...
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Again, this is planning file 1804-11. This is an application to change the plan designation on a number of properties to mixed use and also to change the zoning on a number of properties to mixed use. The area in question is along East Grand Street, near the East Grand Street Bridge. It also includes two parcels owned by the City of Lebanon as part of the Guild's Landing site. Five of these parcels are zoned industrial, two are zoned residential mixed density, which is the city's property. And the one in the county, there is one parcel in the county and that is designated industrial. As noted, the request would change their designations to mixed use and only for the parcels within the city would the zoning be changed to mixed use. There is no concurrent request to annex the county parcel, so that will simply stay in the county. We sent out comments for this project, DLCD reviewed the material and did not oppose the request. The adoption ordinance that is in your pack, it goes through great detail in terms of the zone change. I will simply note briefly that we have vast surpluses of land that are zoned industrial, zoned mixed use, and also zoned residential mixed density. The change to mixed use will affect our, will not affect at all our ability to provide land for these uses. Also note that these are a lot smaller parcels, especially the industrial designated ones that probably are not suitable for industrial types of uses. Many contain commercial activities. I noted with one individual, I said the existing zoning would probably allow at some point an auto wrecking yard. I'm not sure that's what we want to see in this area. That the mixed-use zone would allow the continuation of commercial uses, expansion of commercial uses, and also allows opportunity for residential development as well. As you're well aware, Grand Street is fully serviced, sewer and water, et cetera. And also in the ordinance, I did go through the state land use goals and found that this change complies with those. Based on these factors, the Planning Commission certainly requests that the city council approve the proposed plan amendment and zone change. I would also like to make one other note. You probably have before you a letter from the Oregon, Fair Housing Council of Oregon. I apologize for the delay, but I did not receive this material until 4:06 PM. So it's on my email, okay? I reviewed their material, so to speak, and I am not concerned with doing any goal 10 findings. Or let me put it to you this way. We have a surplus of over 1,200 acres of residential mixed density designated property. Losing 1.5 acres to allow a mixed-use zone is not going to impact the ability of this city to go ahead and provide needed housing. I did submit a brief email to them to that effect. I did not hear back, but I don't believe we have any goal 10 issue with this change. The surpluses are vast, that the change is really immaterial. So again, Planning Commission recommends approval of this change. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions?
So the gist of this letter is they oppose what we're looking at tonight?
I don't think it's opposition. I think they're simply saying you have to make findings to goal 10.
Make sure you comply.
Yes. And I guess I'm scratching my head. I'm not very pleased with the idea of receiving these comments at 4:06. I don't think that's very appropriate. But the other thing is, I did correspond with them about three weeks ago on this issue and they seem to be satisfied with our change in the information that I provided. So I don't think they're opposed. I just think this is a group that is interested in housing. And it just kind of surprises me that of all the cities I'm aware of, I think this community has done an amazing amount of development to meet the housing needs of this community. And it's always a little shock to see a letter like this.
Well, obviously, the Planning Commission didn't receive...
No, what had happened, I got their letters after I shut down at the office, so I could not get those into the Planning Commission. So their letters came too late for me to bring up before the commission. And again, I'd like to note about three weeks ago, they were aware of the date of the council hearing.
How many of these kinds of letters have you received over the years?
You will have three tonight. These are the first three. Yes.
The reason I'm asking.
Excuse me, I think I had one last year or a general questionnaire from this group and nothing ever became of that. But this is the first time I've actually received comments that they wanted submitted before council.
It does seem like we've done very well for housing in Lebanon.
You know, it's interesting. I was looking at a comprehensive plan and we anticipated growth. The continual residential growth at roughly 70% single-family, about 30% multi. I'd say in the last seven or eight years, you could flip those numbers around.
Yeah.
We've done significant on multifamily. And I guess my philosophy is we provide opportunities. Our residential mixed density zone allows anything from single-family to apartments, planned developments, whatever. And frankly, the market is making that decision and I think it's the...
That's appropriate.
Appropriate. I think it's our responsibility to provide that opportunity. We're not restricting apartments. We're not forcing everyone to have 10,000 square foot lots per single-family. I think we're allowing those decisions to be made.
So is there something that you're going to need to do with this? Is it just a response to them?
I did submit a response after I calmed down. I did submit an email response. By law, since they did provide a comment, they will receive notice of the council's decision. And I will likely put maybe, I don't know if I should put a cover letter to that, but I did respond that, you know, this is really not an issue. But I will also include not only notice, but also a copy of the adoption ordinance as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I think it would also be appropriate to put them on notice of the job, successful job that we've done in housing enhancements over the years.
I have an email to that effect about two or three weeks ago and again, it just, I've got to be careful. It kind of galls me because I know we've done a fantastic job and we're constantly doing a good job to make sure that we address housing needs in this community. We're doing everything we can to meet those needs and it's always surprising to see something like this.
I'm sure you'll be working with them to try and straighten that.
I'm confident of that, Mayor.
I figured that, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, at this point, we'll have the city attorney read the resolution.
Now, we do have applicants. I will say the city is the applicant and I'd like to note staff did a great job, so if there's any questions.
Oh, actually, we need to do applicant testimony.
Yes, yes.
So the city is the applicant and are there any proponents that would like to speak for this? Is there anyone that would like to speak opposing this? Okay. At that point, we're going to close the public testimony. All further discussion will be limited to the council and city staff.
Ordinance Bill Number 2018-9, ordinance number 2916, a bill amending the Lebanon Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map to Establish the Mixed-Use Plan Designation and Mixed-Use Zone, File 18-04-11, Dave Hickey et al.
Move for approval? Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance Bill 2018-9. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Ordinance passes. Good evening, my name is Paul Aziz. I'm the mayor of Lebanon and will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing for the matter of planning file number 1805-16, an application for comprehensive plan amendment and zone change to establish the residential mixed-density zone by the applicant, the Gle, is it the Gleens?
Gleens.
Gleens?
Yes, sir.
At River Place. This hearing is now open. Oregon land use law requires several items to be read into the record at the beginning of each and every public hearing. The city attorney will review this material. Your patience is appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't go through everything again. I know everybody was looking forward to that. We will follow the procedures of ORS 197.763. People in the audience, if you have any questions, please raise your hand if you have any questions regarding the procedures. Just generally, I want to point out that in any opposition to the application, that failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval, if any, accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council and the parties, an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. With that, I would ask the clerk to please copy into the record the statements provided at the beginning of the first hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. With that out of the way, I need to ask the audience if there's any objections to the notice that was sent in this case to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider the case. Seeing none, are there any declarations of ex-party contact, conflict, or bias by any members of the council?
No.
Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to the staff report. Walt?
Okay, thank you again, Mayor, members of the council. This is planning file 1805-16. The property is located on the west side of River Road, just north of our new water treatment facility. It's a 9.51 acre parcel, fully serviced and zoned, currently zoned residential low-density. The applicant had the following request. One, they wanted to change the plan and zoning to residential mixed-density. They also want to divide the property into two parcels. And they're also requested approval of a 27-lot, single-family subdivision on one of the newly created parcels. The commission, for the record, approved the subdivision subject to council approval of the zone change. The partition is independent of either decision, so that can go forward regardless. This request, therefore, is limited solely to the proposed con-plan amendment and zone change. I will note that we contacted various agencies and again, DLCD had absolutely no issue with this request. The adoption ordinance, again, addresses all the particular findings with regard to the zone change. I'll just simply note a couple of concerns here. The RM zone does allow single-family development, just like the RL zone. I mean, both zones allow subdivisions. And the applicant does intend to construct a subdivision on one of the parcels. It's just going to be with smaller lots. This new zone, the RM zone, also allows other housing alternatives. And I think on balance, this allows development of single-family uses and also provides additional housing opportunities. I think certainly this is the overarching desire of our housing goal. The site is fully serviced with public facilities and our analysis also notes that this complies with statewide land use goals. It is certainly the recommendation of the Planning Commission that the council approve the proposed plan and zone change. Again, I will note, we did receive a letter from Fair Housing and they were, again, requesting compliance with goal 10 findings. Looking at the comprehensive plan, I think we've done an inadequate job, but I want to put on the record. I did look at our comprehensive plan again and we did not identify any deficiencies in the terms of types of housing. And let me sort of explain, sometimes cities go through a process and determine they don't have enough multifamily land, so they go ahead and zone land or create designations to develop that. The city does not have that issue. Again, we have over 1,200 acres of residential mixed-density designated land, which meets, again, everything from single-family homes on up to apartments. And I think I mentioned the last time that most of the subdivision developments have been on RM zone land, where you can get a little higher density for the price of the property when it comes to development. Therefore, there's really no issue in terms of whether a property is zoned RL or RM. In fact, the RM zoning still allows the subdivision. It allows it at a little higher density and to sort of, you know, look at the larger statewide land use program. This ensures a compact urban form and the fact we don't have to spread out on farmland. This certainly is within the balance of our program. And the bottom line, with a little smaller lot and the size house that would fit on there, I think we can also note that this is, has better potential for affordability as well, as opposed to a large lot, large house. If this is approved by council, I would like to just request that the ordinance be amended to allow me to write a paragraph based on this commentary. I want to be sure I secure the findings on goal 10. I think I've already written it down. I just want to put it into this document. Also, I am going, it was pointed out to me and I will accept responsibility for a scrutiny error. The change is not to mixed use, it's to residential mixed-density and that's on the first page of the ordinance. So that will have to be corrected as well. So sometimes the cut and paste goes a little wayward. So again, that is the staff report. I'll be happy to answer any comments you may have or any commentary on the letter that was submitted.
Questions for Walt? Did you have anything, Rebecca, a question?
No, I'm just arguing how to make that motion as amended.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, applicant testimony, again, is that the city?
No, this is not a city application. The applicant's representative is here.
Okay, would you like to come forward?
Good evening, city councilors. My name's Steve Kay, Cascadia Planning and Development Services. And here representing the applicant for the proposed comprehensive plan and map amendment that's before you tonight. Just like to state that we concur with all staff's findings. We believe that this application meets the criteria for approval. Not going to reiterate what's been presented here already tonight. So myself and the project engineer are both here on hand tonight if you have any questions regarding the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
I have one question. The proposed lot sizes?
The subdivision was approved by the Planning Commission, but the engineer would probably be better suited to...
5,000 to 7,500 square feet. A bulk of them are around 5,000 square feet and they increase from there.
Thanks, Walt.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this? Anyone who opposes or would like to speak against? Okay, we don't need any rebuttal. At this point, we'll close the public testimony. All further discussion will be limited to the council and city staff. Any other council discussion, maybe on the terms of we need to add his comments to the project 10? Is it project 10 or...
Can I make a recommended motion to adopt the ordinance with the amendments suggested by staff?
That would be great. That's easy. Okay.
Do you want to read it?
And at this point, go ahead, city attorney.
Ordinance Bill Number 2018-10, ordinance number 2917, a bill amending the Lebanon Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map to Establish the Residential Mixed-Density Zone Designation and Zone, File 1805-16. You said it was Gleens?
Yeah.
I've been thinking it in my head wrong all day.
I have too.
Gleens at River Place.
I would move for approval with the amendment supplied by the staff. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 2917. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It is passed. All right, third and last. Good evening, my name is Paul Aziz. I am the mayor of Lebanon and will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and the place set for the public hearing of the matter of planning file number 1805-17, a request to annex property and establish the residential mixed-density zone by the applicant, Good Faith Management. This hearing is now open. Oregon land use law requires several items to be read into the record at the beginning of each and every public hearing. The city attorney will review this material and your patience is appreciated.
Again, the procedures are posted on the wall in two locations. Everybody that's in the audience was present for the reading of the instructions previously. If there's no objection, we will have those placed in the record so long as there's no objection by council or by citizens.
Thank you. Thank you. With that out of the way, I need to ask the audience if there's any objections to the notice that was sent in this case to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider the case. Okay, seeing none. Are there any declarations of ex parte contact, conflict, or bias by any members of the council? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on for the staff report. Walt?
Okay, thank you again, Mayor, members of the council. This is Plan File 1805-17. It is a request to annex 2.17 acres of property and also establish the residential mixed density zone. The subject site contains 3.42 acres and is located at the intersection Russell Drive and Franklin Street. There is a home and accessory buildings on the structure, accessory buildings on the property located within the urban growth boundary and designated residential mixed density. Of this 3.42 acres, the applicant only wishes to annex 2.17. The existing home and accessory building will remain in the county. Upon the annexation, the property is rezoned to residential mixed density, and I will note for the record, part of the application had to do with a partition to create that 2.17 acre parcel. The partition line and the annexation line are one and the same. So basically, they're dividing the property and bringing in 2.17 acres. We again noted to affected agencies, DLCD had absolutely no concern with this request. For the record, the partition was approved by the planning commission, subject to council approval of the annexation. Again, the only issue here tonight is the annexation of the subject property. Specific findings, again, are noted within the adoption ordinance. Briefly summarized, this is within the urban growth boundary, adjacent to city limits, and necessary services can be extended to serve the site. This is urbanizable land, exactly what the program is set up for. I would also note, upon annexation, the property is automatically zoned or established a zone consistent with the designation, and again, in this case, is residential mixed density. As the annexation complies with the criteria, the planning commission recommended council approval of the request. I must once again note that we received a commentary from the Fair Housing Council stating that Goal 10 findings do apply in this case. I would like to note for the record that I respectfully disagree with that opinion. The buildable lands inventory that was conducted by the city years ago established the need for a variety of types of lands to meet the commercial, residential, industrial, public needs of this community. This particular piece of property was designated residential mixed density, as it was thought at best that this land should be used for that particular purpose. In that case, there is no need to reinvent the wheel, if you will. We've already made that determination through the buildable lands inventory, our housing needs analysis, and so upon annexation, yes, we are technically changing a zone, but upon annexation, that zone goes from a county zone to a city zone, and that city zone has to correspond to the plan designation. So, in this case, the one and the only zone that can apply is residential mixed density, and that zone is only established upon annexation to the city. So again, with that, I, I don't see there's any need to change any of the findings, I think that's well covered. Again, DLCD had no issue. And finally, again, planning commission recommends approval of the annexation.
Thank you, Walt. Any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. We can have the applicant, is the applicant here? Or is that us?
No.
That would be, it looks like it.
Hi, my name is Ed Patton from Udow Engineering and Land Surveying LLC, representing the applicant. We agree with the, the staff report and the planning commission's recommended conditions of approval.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? I had one, was there any, and I don't remember if you had said it or if it's in here, because I didn't see it. Is there any idea of what's going to happen with this property or what the plans are?
Well, it's likely just to utilize the urban land use designation as residential mixed density within the restrictions or opportunities afforded by the city code.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, thank you very much, Ed. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone that opposes and would like to speak against this? Okay, we'll now close the public testimony. All further discussion will be limited to the council and city staff. City attorney will read the title.
Ordinance Bill Number 2018-11, ordinance number 2918, a bill for ordinance annexing and zoning property following consent filed with the city council by landowners in said area pursuant to ORS 222.120 and ORS 222.170, File 18-05-17, Good Faith Management.
Move for approval. Second.
Do we need to amend that one?
No.
No.
I just want to make sure, okay.
Thank you for asking.
Did you ask for ex parte contacts on this one? I did, earlier, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, we've had a motion and a second for the ordinance number 2918. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Walt. Regular session number four, approval to bid for West River Trail project, Ron Whitlich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. What we have for you tonight is a bid opening and recommended award for the West River Trail. For those of you that don't know where West River Trail is, it's behind the Mountain River Park, which is over by, what's the school? Yeah, I think it's the school. River View School, thank you. Anyway, it's a tie-in to that. It was a grant that was given by Oregon Parks and Recreation back in 2016. We spent about a year looking to pipe a ditch in order to put the trail over a ditch, went through the environmental, and came to the conclusion that the environmental was going to be way too onerous to do that with the mitigation that they wanted us to do and continue doing. So we opted to get easements, and we got the easements, and we'll actually come out onto Mountain River Drive approximately 200 feet north of River Road. And then we've got grants that will tie all that in at a later date. But that River, Mountain River Drive fully supports pedestrian and bicycle activities, sidewalks, bike lanes, the whole work, so the features are there. Oregon Parks is good with that. So you can see, what we, we opened the bids, we had three bidders, which doesn't surprise me this time of year, contractors are very busy. The lowest was RJ Armstrong and Associates, and I should kind of break this down. We also did a deductive alternate in this. Build Lemonade Trails and Thad Nelson have offered about, I want to say somewhere around $35,000 for paving of the Island Loop Trails out on the Island Loop. The price for that was 50, I want to say 54,000. So with their contribution and Parks SDCs, we recommend going forward with that. So as part of the deductive alternate. And then the remainder of the funding comes, $104,000 comes from Oregon Parks and Recreation, and then the remainder, of course, would come from our Parks SDCs, which we have a 33% match for all trails in our SDC program. So with that, I would recommend that we award the project to RJ Armstrong and Associates. And I'm going to answer any questions.
I see there's quite a difference between the engineer's estimate and what the bids came in.
Yeah, I talked to our guys about that. We went back through and looked at that too, and it's one bid item, and it's for a retaining wall, a port retaining wall. Brian Vendetta did the design for this, and he and I talked about it substantially, and it was $90 a foot versus our $30 a foot. I don't know, that's, that's, that's the main, that's the main one that got us. And you're going to see these bids go way up. I mean, if you look, there, there's two that really wanted it and one that wanted to see if anybody was going to bid it and see if they'd make a bunch of money. So it's pretty typical this time of year. Contractors are busy, and I, I see no issue with it. All the rest of the bid items came in where we thought they would, and everybody had the same price on that, that one bid item, so.
Well, it's nice to see a local win the bid, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ron.
Yep.
At this point, entertain a motion.
Move for the award of the project.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to award the bid for the West River Trail project. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Number five, amending resolution number 2018-14, levying taxes for fiscal year 2018-19. Matt Afkin, our finance director.
Mayor, city council, thanks for having me back after last meeting. I know it was a little bit brutal. So each year, as I say in my staff report, we kind of go through and we come back after we do our initial certification of taxes, and we add to it our delinquent sewer charges and our delinquent storm drain charges. Normally with our water customers, we turn off their water, which gets them to pay their bill. We don't have that ability with sewer and storm water customers. So the way that we do that is we certify the amounts that they owe to the county following the county's specific rules. So I have an amendment in here, and we got a payment today for one of these accounts, so we had to make some adjustments. So I have some new numbers that I did not send out, but they, they don't make much of a difference in, in whether or not you guys agree with what we're doing or not. But the new amounts for the sewer charges are $49,594.18, and the storm drain is $5,063.8. You'll notice that the sewer charges actually went up because we did not include the administration fee that we usually do in the previous number.
So I need to note for the record that the mayor does have the amended resolution to be signed.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Were you done, Matt? I'm sorry. Okay, I want to make sure.
Please.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll have the city attorney read the resolution, please.
Resolution Number 2018-27, a resolution amending section one of resolution Number 2018-14 to exclude delinquent sewer and storm drain assessments.
Move for approval as amended.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded, agree with resolution 2018-27. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number six, League of Oregon Cities Legislative Priorities Survey. Gary's not here, so I'll be presenting that. This is the exercise we go through every year to let the League of Oregon Cities know what our legislative priorities are for the city of Lebanon, and Gary has commented on the topics that he thinks are pertinent to our town and most important. We can come up with any of the ones that are on their list. It's just something that we need to get back to them and decide. So I guess we can go through and discuss them. If there's any disagreement with the ones that Gary picked, or if there's additions that you're interested in, let me know and we'll talk about it.
I liked Gary's, Gary's pick. I mean, it's, it's hard to come up with exactly what is important to us, but he came up with, you know, infrastructure financing, which is critical to all of us. He, he put it very well. PERS reform, the third-party building inspection, which we discussed at length in the last few meetings, and then wetland development. I liked, I liked all of it.
I did as well.
Yeah. When you look at the list, all the things that they've got listed this year are pretty important, but I think he's pulled out the really important ones that apply to us, I think.
Things we've been discussing.
Yeah, exactly, and we're dealing with.
I just wonder, though, if the third-party building inspection should still be in there. I thought that was pretty much settled.
It's not.
It's not.
No, no, it's still pending and floating around, and they're still actually talking about it up there.
Okay.
What it is, is the governor stepped in and stopped the administrative ruling, but that doesn't mean that it's not going to be reenacted at some point in time. So we've got to, I think it's important to continue with that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. Any other changes?
I do need to point out something different that they're asking for this year. They're also asking for the four leased that you want to pursue, so.
That's right, and I, I talked to Gary about that, and.
Have you ever done that before?
I don't personally think that we even need to do that. I just don't, because that, that is a weird.
I can let them know that you elected not to do that if you so choose.
If, if you would, unless there's difference in the council, but picking the four leased, I just.
The beer tax increase, I'm not.
Yeah. What'd you say, Whit?
There is no four leased.
That's, I thought they were all pretty good, actually.
Yeah.
And we picked the, the top ones, I just don't, yeah, let's just go with that then.
Okay.
That seems to be a consensus. All right, thank you, council. City manager's report is in, in your packet, and if you have any questions, obviously you can ask Gary. I always love that administrative report because you can see all the things that are going on. It's amazing, all the balls that are in the air that are just things that are working, being worked on.
I have people ask me often what's going on in the city, and I'm like, you need to go to the city's website, you need to, and, and look at that part of our packet. I think with, from all of the department heads, that it is really interesting, and if you want to know what's going on, it's the perfect place to find that out.
I agree. Okay.
And they say, well, I didn't know I could do that.
Information is us. Items from council.
Yeah, we ready for that?
Yeah, we are, we're done.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I had a couple of things, I, questions that I had, somewhere. Yeah, Kim Toomes passed away, as everyone knows, and he was such an important figure of the city of Lebanon. I, I think there should, should be some kind of a memorial in his name. I don't know quite how to do it, but I talked to Shelley yesterday about it, and she mentioned that Scott Simpson, we had a deal out at, here, with a flagpole and a flag. And she also said there was one out at the River Center for, for.
Harry, oh, out at the River Park for Harry Carter?
Was it the River Park?
Yeah, River Park's Harry Carter.
Okay, well, I went to the River Center today and drove through, and I didn't see anything, so I thought, what's going on here? It's out at the River Park then?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, this is just something to think about, but shouldn't we do something?
Absolutely.
I think it'd be good. Have you, I know you know the family, have you talked to the family about that?
Haven't yet.
Because the Scott Simpson thing came about, a request from them, they came to us, and it was their idea, and being that a death in the family, in my opinion, is kind of personal, it'd probably be nice if we talked to the family and see what they might like. I think it'd be appropriate to do something, absolutely.
Yeah.
I was going to talk to Thelma, but I was going to give her some time.
Okay, yeah, that's kind of what I was.
Yeah. Linda, we'll do it together.
Okay.
Okay, you'll take care of that then.
Okay, the other thing was the, the dog park across from Ralston's Park. Why do we need another dog park? We've got two big parks already, and.
What two?
Well, you got one out across from the sewer or the water treatment.
Oh, but that's not really a developed.
That's pretty good size, and it's well-used. And the other one is going to be 17th, I think they're going to have the grand opening, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, on South Main.
Just a thought on my part, that wouldn't it be better to have kind of a kids' park there? There's nothing at Ralston Park for the kids to, to do.
I actually have some input on that as well. Can I piggyback on that?
Sure.
And talk about it, because I attended a neighborhood watch meeting with Chief Stevenson, what night was that, Monday night?
Yes.
Monday night? And the area was the area surrounding Ralston Park, and these are the neighbors that have concerns about the loitering and things of that nature in that, in that park, some of the issues. So one of the things that came up, though, was that they're, they were kind of pleased to see the lot cleaned up.
Yeah.
But all of them questioned, why, why another dog park? Why is this going to be a dog park? It didn't make sense to any of them. And so I told them that I would bring that to council, and we could talk to Jason about that and see if there was anything else that could be done there. So that was one thing that came from that. And the second was that there, there is no lighting at that park.
Right.
And they are very concerned, that, that corner does get very dark because there are no streetlights proximal to that. So when night falls and when that gas station closes down, shuts their lights off, it's pitch black, and that, that still is a city park, and there's still. And that, that still is a city park and there's still some, there's a lot of foot traffic through there, and there can be a lot of cutting through that area. And I think liability-wise and safety-wise, it'd probably be in our best interest to support some sort of permanent lighting for that park. The resident that lives directly next door to it specifically was calling for it, so she would be the only one that would be encroached upon by the ambient light. And she's calling for it. So I think it's kind of a no-brainer for us to look out for the safety of that neighborhood and, and also to protect the city from liability of something happening in there. It is now a city park, and so.
Yeah.
The problem is it's so small, there's not a lot you can do with it. It's just that little pocket of, of a piece of property.
Pretty good-sized lot, though.
Yeah.
But, but.
Yeah, play structure, something of that nature.
But you put that there, and the, the whole idea of a dog park was to kind of have people coming in so there's always constant traffic going in and out of the dog park. Whereas right before that, the reason we even put that in there was because of the homeless and because of the people sleeping there and the trash and the drugs that were going on. And that kind of park or space was made so that that wasn't going to happen anymore, and that's why the fence was put up. And, and that was my feeling on the, the dog park, that it would be a good idea, it would be, it said there would be traffic there. So you, when you have a lot more people, it tends to get rid of the criminal element because they don't like being there.
What they describe, though, is that people show up with their dogs and they just let their dogs run, and they leave the leash on the dog, and they throw the leash and let the dog run with the leash, and therefore the dog's stolen the leash. And it's, it's creating, it's just, you're going to have issues one way or the other. And, but all the residents there kind of questioned, why this? And it made me think, maybe we should have done some sort of a survey of the residents first before, you know? And I know this was kind of done as an opportunistic thing, but, and I'm not, I'm not questioning what was done or how it was done. But hindsight, what it is, and maybe thinking towards the future, maybe we could have a little best-of-both-world scenario there and appease the actual neighbors in that area. Definitely with the light, I think that needs to happen.
I think the light.
And like secondarily, maybe we can create a smaller shared space where there's more than just the, the dog park.
I don't know, I don't know if you're, I don't know a lot about dog parks, but I, I don't feel like you're characterizing it like it is, because it's, because it'll be fenced and doesn't, it has a double entry, right?
There will be, yeah.
So there's a double entry, and because that'll be blocked off, I think people won't cut across that lot. I think it will detract some of that, because you do see that right now, there are people coming.
Or they'll go inside there and be more secure when they're in there doing whatever they're doing, because they know that people won't come in. Because, you know, if it's nighttime and you want to find a place to hide out, you'll go through two or three gates to get to a spot where you can be in the dark and hide out.
Well, I think, I think the light is a valid point, but I, but I think there is a call for another. I, I didn't know how many, I didn't know we had an overabundance of dog parks. I thought that it was nice to have one kind of down there. Three blocks away, you have a kids' park at Booth, and so I, I don't know. I, I, I agree with the lighting, but I don't really see a problem with having a dog park there.
Lighting, I think, is very critical for that area. I have not had anyone that's in favor of another dog park.
No.
In fact, they will say, why another dog park? Let's do something for, to enhance Ralston Park with some, they don't have any ideas, but they would rather see something else to enhance Ralston Park, whether that's.
Yeah, I, I agree.
We do have planned for fall, the Ralston Park, I don't remember, it was going to be a committee that was going to look into Ralston Park, what we're going to do with Ralston Park. So that, that's in fall, and Gary's got that scheduled to come up. So that would be something we'd be looking at the park.
Shouldn't this decision have come before the council, though?
Well, the Gilat Dog Park and the Dog Park over here didn't come before council.
No, I think, I think the city needs to have, you know, I think parks needs to have some freedom to take their space and do what they will with it. But at the same time, I think it's important to recognize the wants and desires of the citizens, especially those who live in that area.
Yes.
When developing that park, because it's going to be kind of their neighborhood park. And so if they, if none of those people in that neighborhood want a dog park, because maybe they're not dog people, and then people are going to be bringing dogs into their neighborhood, you know, and dogs usually get walked in or out. I just think, I think we need to listen to, listen to the people on this one and not so much make a unilateral decision. And maybe we can roll back our ideas a little bit before too much is invested and try to accommodate them a little more. I know they would appreciate that. It's a very active group, it was a very large group of citizens there. Not only are they getting involved in the neighborhood watch, they're creating a neighborhood watch in that area, but a number of them are signing up to do the Citizens Academy, and a number of them are signing up for the Parks Watch that's being reinvigorated down there. So these are, these are active community members asking us to do something for them, and I think we should listen to them.
I agree.
I agree as well.
Well, I think then what we do is refer to the committee when the, when the committee's dealing with it. And that, the point of that committee would be like the Strawberry Plaza Committee, like the Monument Committee. It would be of a group of people that are the local invested people in that community.
Maybe we can direct Gary to get in touch with Della and connect him to those people so that they can participate in that committee. And then if they don't want to do it, that's on them, but if they, if they're into that, they, they should get involved. And I guarantee you, they will get involved.
Okay.
I think so.
So that was all I had, but it tied in really nicely to that. On the light, though, is that something we can push to Jason pretty quickly when he returns?
I would talk to Gary about that, yeah.
That might be an issue with power.
I'll bring it up to Gary.
Okay, thank you.
When we meet. Any other comments? Here has nothing, baseball. A big one. Okay. Trey had something? Go ahead, Trey.
This is just kind of more of a community announcement. Any of you guys that are Facebook friends with me know I've been bombarding everybody with the fundraiser that we're doing right now for putting in turf in fields at both the baseball and softball field at the high school. We're pushing it, and it, and it really is more than just a high school project, because those fields, a lot of people don't know that a softball field is actually the exact same size as a midget baseball field. So when we turfed Christopher Columbus Park, it's actually, can be either a baseball or a softball field. You just throw a mound out there and it's a baseball field. And that's how the softball field can be used as well, both for youth softball and for midget baseball. And in the baseball field, we have JBO baseball that plays on that same-sized field, and we're pushing a lot more tournaments. In fact, we got a grant from the, from the Chamber to help us facilitate tournaments. We had three, three tournament weekends this year. We've had such a nice, dry spring, we happened to have one of our biggest tournaments on that weekend when it rained. If you guys remember, we had that big rain. So that's about the worst thing you can do in baseball. You actually lose money when you host a tournament where you get all the cancellations, because there are certain costs that you've already incurred. So I'm really pushing this as not only for the high school, for those kids, but for the youth, for JBO, for girls' softball. This is a great thing for Oregon, or, excuse me, for Lebanon. And one of the, one of the reasons is, is that everybody's looking for early spring tournaments, right? But everybody doesn't want to hold an early spring tournament because of the potential for rain and cancellations. This is really going to set us apart if we can get this. We've got commitments from both the softball coach and the baseball coach that we can use those for youth, youth tournaments as well as high school, high school tournaments. So, so to make a, you know, not a very short story, any shorter, we are selling bricks and accepting donations. The total project cost is about four hundred thousand. We've actually got that down to about a hundred and fifty thousand through in-kind donations by like Rick Franklin, Al Sullivan, Farak, Ram Trucking, Brian Vendetta at Udell Engineering is donating all the land and surveying. And, and just today, we had Drew Breezy down there laying forms for us for new concrete for the dugouts at the softball field. It's pretty unbelievable what people are stepping up. There's also a great partnership right now between this, the city and the school district. We're actually planning ahead, since we're doing work on some of the streets right around there, we're going ahead and stubbing in sewer, so at some point we can actually have something other than a best pot sitting out there at both the baseball and the softball field. So there's a lot of things going on. It's, it's really good for economic development, for tourism, and we're really becoming a destination for tournaments, and, and it's getting kind of exciting. So if anybody wants to support that, or if you hear about it in the community, it is really sponsored by, you know, the city's very involved with Jason Williams, the school district, the Lebanon Booster Club. Everybody's really climbed on board this, and if you have any questions, let me know. I've already given Jason a pledge form for a brick. We're trying to sell bricks between four-by-eight all the way up to twelve-by-twelve granite. Now, you can actually put, put logos on and vector graphics and stuff, so it's going to be really neat. And Breezy's going to come in, everybody knows how good Breezy is, he's going to come in at the end and he's going to put all these things around the backstop, and they're going to look symmetrical and beautiful, and it's going to be very, very nice, so looking forward to it. So, thank you.
Is that all?
Yep, that's it. I don't, I don't, I don't take advantage of that very often, but this is a big deal for me.
No, it's important.
Council comments?
Very appreciated.
I asked permission, Linda.
He was very good. Linda, did you want to make an announcement about the election? Or not? I, I was going to do that, I was.
I wasn't planning on it, but I can certainly do that. Filing dates start tomorrow through July thirty for city council elections. We have one position for each ward, one, two, and three, and then the mayor as well, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I didn't prep you on that.
So far I have three filings set up for this week.
Very good. Any other comments? Okay, next up, we have another opportunity for the public to comment. Would anybody like to comment to council? Sure, come on up.
My name is Andrea Solomon, and I live at the Queen Anne Apartments, one forty-two East Elmer Street. They are, it's an. It's a low-income housing tax credit property. They are, they are maintained, or, or the management company is called Guardian Management, and they are doing a very bad job. The Oregon Housing and Community Services is, which is a government service, or a government agency, is supposed to oversee that, the, the, all of these low-income housing tax credit properties. They aren't doing their job either. I have fallen twice, I've, I've gotten two concussions in the last couple of years behind. The first, well, there's, there's a few things that have happened. Back in two thousand sixteen, I, my, my, the garbage disposal in my apartment literally took four months of, of maintenance requests for them to even, I, I don't even know if this is, I'm sorry, if this is a Lebanon city problem, but this is the only place that I know where to go. It took them four months to come and fix the, the garbage disposal in my apartment. It took two minutes to fix. After I felt, after I hit my head and got a really bad concussion this, this last time, I saw, I got really angry. I went around the property and I started taking pictures of all the stuff that was going on around there. One, one thing that I did also, there, there's a dog park in, in this, in the Queen Anne Apartments, and tenants allow, tenants and the management there, even though I've, I've told the management, allow their dogs to go there, you know? So I've also, they, they had a pipe sticking up out of the sand. I fell over that, too. So they're, they're just not doing, doing their job. I, I went around and I took pictures of a lot of the things. They have large portions of their fences that are literally falling down. And they're using the portions of the fences that are falling down to hold up the standing fences that are. And, I mean, and, and we're talking screws and bolts and, and whatever are just sticking up for all the kids to go run around. I mean, so I, I've been in contact with, okay, what makes me angry about this issue is that first I went to, what is it, the Housing Authority.
Lynn County Affordable Housing?
No, Lynn, Lynn Benton Housing Authority.
Okay.
Okay. And this was back in two thousand sixteen. I, because of that, my, my garbage disposal issue, I said, what do I do? They, they didn't say, well, you know, I, what I said to them was, well, can I do, can I do the fix and repair remedy that, that renters have, that, you know, if you fix something, then you can deduct that from your rent? I can't because I live in, because I have government subsidized housing, right? So they said, well, you, it looks like you might have to just go to a lawyer. I don't have, I can't afford a lawyer, you know? You know, and so, so then, I, after four months, I, I went to HUD, and a, and a woman named Laura, Laura Walters from HUD, who I, I guess is over this region of HUD, she, she's not even, I'm not even in HUD Housing. And she said, well, the, the thing that you do is you ask for a special inspection. I did that. That finally got the, the job done. It literally took me four months to get this, it, it's just, there, there are people in the housing complex right now that have holes in their carpet, they're not being fixed. Why?
Yeah, I, I don't know the agency to contact for that, except the Lynn County Housing is who I had thought. I don't, if you don't want to answer, you don't have to, but if you qualify either as disabled or senior, then there's the Lynn County Senior and Disabled Services, and I know they deal with that, that they can help.
No, the, the actual agency that oversees the, the low-income housing tax credit property is called, it, it's an actual agency in Salem, and it's called Oregon Housing and Community Services. And I've been in contact with them. They literally have people that come and do inspections, they say on a yearly basis, but the fences have been falling down for five years.
Yeah, as a council, there's just not much that we can do.
I'd say, I don't think we as a, we as a body hold any authority over any of that. It sounds very unfortunate, but I don't, I, I'm, I'm racking my brain trying to think of anything this body can do for you.
How about the, that, the one group that comes in, I can't remember, it's not United Way, but the one that has that eight-hundred number or that six-one-one number, and they come in, they always, it's with the community.
Two-one-one.
Two-one-one. Have you ever called two-one-one?
They don't, they don't help with issues like this.
Okay, I, I wasn't sure, but I don't have any other resources that I can think of.
They say, they give you information of if you're, if you're homeless, if you're, you know, if you need food, yada, 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 yada. This is who you, who you call. But the, the actual people that, that have, that oversee this, that, that have oversight of the compliance of the maintenance is the Oregon Housing and Community Services. I, I, I don't know what. Yeah, I've been, I've been emailing them, I, you know, and, and they literally told me what, in my email, they, sorry.
Robert? That's a state agency that you're referring to.
Right.
So what I would suggest that you do is contact your local senator or local representative, because they have an opportunity to have some oversight over government, the state agencies.
So.
So Senator Gessler or Representative.
Sherry Springer? Sherry Springer?
No, it would be Sherry Springer for us.
Right, well, yeah.
For.
Fred Gerard.
Gerard, yeah.
Senator Gerard.
Okay, do you guys, do you have like a list of those names, or is there like a?
State, state website has them.
Yeah.
And they're also listed in the telephone directory.
Okay, Sherry Springer, Sarah, what was her name?
Yeah, it wouldn't be Sarah, Sarah would not, that's Albany. And then it would be the Fred Gerard, Gerard.
Gerard. And Springer is S-P-R-E-N-G-E-R.
Oh, Spr- Springer.
Springer.
With an E.
And Gerard is G-I-R-O-D, Fred Gerard.
Mike, I suggest when you contact them, that you have a list available of when you contacted the state agencies.
Oh, yeah, I've got emails.
And who you, who you contacted, because that, that kind of information will be helpful for them to be able to follow up.
Yeah, they have the authority.
And, and you're sure that it's not a HUD-regulated complex or with Section eight money?
That's why I called HUD, because that, I, I assumed that it was. And then Laura, Laura Walters, of the, the woman that, that is, I guess, oversees this area, said, no, we're not HUD. You, you live in a low-income housing tax cre- tax credit property, which, two, I guess, two separate entities.
I'll give you, I'll give you a, a number after the meeting. Just, it'll be able to confirm whether it's a, whether it's, federal government has any authority or not. Because I'm surprised, it does have Section eight funding, I'd be surprised if, if HUD doesn't have some authority over it.
Well, I'm, I'm on a housing. Well, I'm, I'm on a, um, a housing voucher, not a Section Eight voucher, but a housing choice voucher, so I don't, okay, I'll wait, though.
Yeah. And in the meantime, start contacting the senator and, and representative. I think that'd be good. That was a great idea, thanks.
I didn't even think about that. Thank you.
That government experience comes in handy there, huh, Robert?
Forty-two years.
Thank you very much for coming, and, and I'm sorry that we can't help, but hopefully that gives you some direction.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm just going through whoever I can go to, because I'm, I, it's just really hard watching. It was a really nice property when I, when I first got there, and it-
That's got to be frustrating.
It may not be, but-
Thank you.
Doesn't hurt to check.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment? Okay, seen none. Any comments or questions from the press? Nothing from the press. Next scheduled council means August 8, 2018, 6:00 p.m., regular session. September 12, 2018, 6:00 p.m., regular session. We are adjourned.